Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for September 13, 2016. We're glad you're with us this morning. Our custom is to present the invocation and the pledge of allegiance before calling our meeting officially to order. Today, the invocation will be presented by Pastor Tom Beck. Boy, it's been awhile, my friend.
How are you?
I'm well. From Faith Lutheran, I saw that name and I said, "I know that guy."
Yeah, man, absolutely.
From Faith Lutheran Church, and I'm glad you're with us. That'll be followed with a pledge of allegiance to be led by Deputy Carl Jones, who has served in the Cobb County Sheriff's Office for over 12 years. He is currently assigned to operations divisions. And before coming to Cobb, he served with Chris County Sheriff's Office for 13 years. We're glad you're with us, glad you saw the light with Cobb County. So those that wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
We make our beginning in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear wise and loving Father, God of all creation, Lord, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom we enjoy in this land. Thank you for loving us in your boundless and gracious nature. Lord, as we remember the horrible events of September 11, 2001, give peace and comfort to those who lost loved ones. Continue to heal this nation and give us the lasting peace that can only come from your gracious hands. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, we pray for our county commissioners, and in particular for this assembled meeting here today, we ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. A sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of this county, a keen thirst for what is just and right, confidence in what is good and fitting. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and provide them with personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. Bless the agenda set before them today. Guide them to act in a manner that pleases you and benefits those who live and work in and around our beloved Cobb County. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Deputy. We appreciate you being with us this morning. We'll now call this meeting officially to order. A little bit of housekeeping, if I could, please, as it relates to Tab 11, our community development hearing. Dana, are you with us? I believe in cooperation with the county attorney's office and your office. Do you have an update on this hearing?
Yes, we do, sir. We have received notification from the applicant that they have withdrawn their application from consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow, you have some comments?
We received the notice rather late last night, and I know a lot of folks from the community had planned to attend and are here. So I'd like to ask, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to ask you to see, get a head count of those here.
Sure. If there are folks here that were here for this hearing that wanted to speak in either opposition or support, would you please stand?
And I'm assuming all are in opposition?
Absolutely.
Except...
Twenty-one. Thank you.
Twenty-one, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for taking time to come out today. And what this means is, the applicant is withdrawing this particular application for an alcohol license, and they can come back anytime with a new plan or application.
That is correct, ma'am. In addition to that, whatever zoning stipulations were put on the property during the zoning aspect of this particular case would still be in force as all zoning stipulations, since they go with the land, not with the business.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you folks that are here today, that hearing will not be today. So I appreciate you being here. You're more than welcome to stay here for the next two or three hours as we go through our agenda, if you want, or go home for more. Pardon me? Thank you. So this takes us to Tab 1, Presentations. We have two items. The first is a presentation, proclamation presentation by Commissioner Burrow to the Daughters of the American Revolution. Commissioner Burrow.
If I could have the Daughters of the American Revolution up first, and then we'll have the Cobb Republican Women who are also here. It is an honor for me to recognize these ladies for the work that they do in preserving and educating folks on our Constitution. So I have a proclamation today to recognize September 17 as Constitution Day. Whereas Constitution Week commemorates America's most important document and has celebrated the week of September 17 through the 24th. The U.S. Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed throughout history to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, in 1955, the group petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through the 24th to be dedicated every year for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas the purpose of Constitution Week celebration is to emphasize citizens' responsibilities to protect and defend the Constitution, inform people that this important document is the foundation of our way of life, and encourage study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution also built a structure in tribute to the Constitution of the United States, Constitution Hall, which is a performing arts center that opened in 1929. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 24th, 2016, as Constitution Week in Cobb County and thank the Daughters of the American Revolution for its tireless advocacy. We encourage all residents to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms it affords us. This the 13th day of September, 2016. Thank you all so much for all you do in preserving and educating on behalf of the Constitution. And Elaine, I'm going to ask you to give us a few words and introduce the group.
Okay. I want to thank Commissioner Burrow for having us, and we're here to celebrate the 2029th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution. And by the way, it's also the 225th ratification anniversary with the Bill of Rights. The Daughters of the American Revolution, we are here to promote education, patriotism, and historic preservation, which would include the Constitution and knowing more about it. Our committee, the Constitution Week Committee in the Fielding Lewis DAR Chapter, has visited over 50 schools in the Cobb County District, elementary schools particularly, and we've distributed Constitution Week education packets for the 4th and 5th grade teachers, as well as a book, The U.S. Constitution and You, for their library. And on behalf of our chapter, we'd like to donate a DVD from the National Constitution Center to Commissioner Burrow. And it's a More Perfect Union, and we hope that she'll enjoy that. And then, just finally, so you'll know what we do, each of us are related to a patriot that served or fought during the Revolution. And I'd like to introduce a patriot from Virginia, Lynn Parsons. Her patriot was William Hay.
My patriot was Sergeant John Atkins from Chesterfield County, Virginia.
I'm Joan Bloom, and my patriot that I came in on, I've actually got seven of them that I've been able to prove so far. But the patriot I came in on is John Hounzel, and he fought in the Cherokee Expansion Battle.
My patriot is Benjamin Franklin, and we all know who he is, and he came from Pennsylvania. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, ladies. Now we'll get a picture. Now, if I could have the Cobb Republican Women's Club up of Cobb County. And you two, you have also been active in Constitution Week, delivering constitutions to the schools for many years. I know I've worked on that committee in the past, and so I'd like to present Wynne McGarty and Barbara Hickey to this proclamation, which is a little bit different, so I'll read it as well. Whereas, the United States Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed throughout history to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. September 17 marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of this important document by 39 brave men at the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia. And whereas, even before women had the right to vote, Republican women were dedicated to the cause of freedom, forming clubs all over the country by the late 1800s. Their purpose was to promote Republican ideals and educate Americans about the importance of a sound government. Whereas, it is vital that all Americans read, study, and understand the greatest document of human liberty and help protect the freedoms set forth in the Bill of Rights. Since 2010, the Cobb County Republican Women's Club Constitution Committee, headed by Millie Rogers and Barbara Hickey, has delivered constitutions to 5th graders in both the Cobb County and Marietta school systems. And whereas, the Cobb County Republican Women's Club was able to purchase and deliver more than 4,700 constitutions with flashcards to students in 2012. The club's continued work is a great way to help educate our youth and honor the efforts of women who came before them. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 17 as Constitution Day in Cobb County and thank the Cobb County Republican Women's Club for its efforts to educate the public. We encourage all residents to read and study this magnificent document and celebrate the 229th anniversary of its creation. This the 13th day of September. Thank you.
Would you all like to say a few words?
We're just always very excited to be able to go into the schools and give these children these constitutions. The teachers and the students are all thrilled to get those constitutions. When we first started and Barbara roped me onto the committee, I just felt like, really? These kids want a Constitution? They do. It was very exciting, and the teachers are just so appreciative. And of course, we were able to get some fundraising through the superintendent last year, but we're falling a little bit short on our contributions. So any help that you'd be able to afford, it's only a dollar a Constitution. So thank you. If you can help us, you can go to our website, CCRWC.com.
Thank you, Wynne. And thank you, Commissioner Burrow, for just always taking this on, even though we roped you into doing this. You do a great... It is an honor. It's an honor to serve the students of Cobb County and the city of Marietta, and we look forward to this Friday, we're going out on Friday, and we thank the DAR for all their efforts, too. Great. Great group of ladies. Thank you all for all that you do in our community, and remember to celebrate September 17 as Constitution Day.
Thank you, ladies. The next item is to have Mr. Kent France from the National Weather Service in Peachtree City present a brief overview of flood operations course and present a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Hankerson. Mr. France, good to see you.
Good to see you. I saw you at Sweetwater Creek a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, I am Kent France with the National Weather Service. I am the service hydrologist down at the office down in Peachtree City. My purpose here today is to recognize a very important person in our career, David Hankerson. Would you like to come on over this way a minute? I first met David in June of 2005 as a student in the Flood Fight Operations Course, which is an advanced CEM, Certified Emergency Manager course, that puts all the effort on preparing for floods, how to handle the floods, and the post-documentation after floods. So there is emergency manager officials, first responders, and decision-makers in that course. I was originally, David, going to recognize you at the course this year. It's every October, first week of October, but somehow, he didn't send his approval to me to take a family vacation on the first week of October.
We haven't approved it either.
So maybe there's still hope. But I wanted to recognize him for his many years of support to our class. What I have here is a letter from my supervisor that I'd like to read. It says, "Dear David, on behalf of the National Weather Service, I would like to recognize you for your many years of dedication to the Flood Fight Operations Course, held at the Georgia Public Safety Training Center in Forsyth, Georgia. You were a student in the course in June 2005, and it was noticed by the instructor you had an extensive background in floodplain management and mitigation. You became a guest speaker in 2006 to share your experience, and the instructors and students have greatly benefited from your professionalism and knowledge during the past nine years. The National Weather Service appreciates your level of dedication in helping make the course a complete success for emergency management officials and decision-makers. It is clearly a result of your leadership as an emergency manager and commitment to the class. The citizens of Cobb County should take great pride in you in achieving this status. Congratulations again, David, on this achievement. We're proud to have you as one of our partners, and that's sincerely Keith Stellman, meteorologist in charge." And so I would like to add that it's been a great pleasure to work with David each year, and we will give you a year off here to take your vacation, and we certainly wanted to recognize him with this certificate.
Okay, Kent, before you do that, we're very proud of Mr. Hankerson, of course, in his leadership role, not only with your organization, but as the EMA Director here for Cobb County. So we would like to come down and share in his recognition for the photograph he would. And Steve and Bill, if you would join as direct staff as well, I'd appreciate that.
Let me say, Kent, it was an honor. I look forward to it each year. I normally depart Marietta about 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, would eat at the exit 212, to be there for my class at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, and I would drive back to Marietta. But certainly, it is something that, as many of you remember, I was hired by Cobb County in 1984 because of my stormwater and floodplain background. And I've had mentors such as Bill Higgins. Kent, that was my secret weapon to back me up with a lot of the data. But we've enjoyed our relationship with the National Weather Service, our rain gauges, and a lot of things as information for our citizens of this county. And certainly, I appreciate the board for allowing me to do this, because it's so much fun. But to try to be a part of training advanced certified emergency managers has always been a goal of mine, so I want to thank you for that and thank you for coming up. I was surprised and honored at the same time. I was wondering whether I was being uninvited for the next year's class, but I'm glad you clarified that. You're going to give me a year sabbatical. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Mr. Hankerson, and to Steve and Bill, thank you for your support in this area that's very important to the county. Takes us to Tab 2. Mr. McCullers, I believe you have one item.
Good morning. Water system requests that you hold a public hearing for the South Cobb Water Reclamation Facility Headworks Improvements Project, a project where consultant services are expected to exceed $100,000.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for this agenda item. This agenda item, only anyone wishing to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. McCullers.
Thank you.
That takes us to Tab 3, Support Services Agency, one item. Ms. Stanley?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm County Manager. I'm Sharon Stanley, Director of Information Services Department. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing regarding professional services for the planning, design, development, and implementation of a web portal for Cobb County Government. Professional services for this project are expected to exceed $100,000. Notice a public hearing for this project was advertised in the Marietta Daily Journal on August 12, August 19, and August 26 of 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for this agenda item, this agenda item only. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward at this time. Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Tab 4, Community Development. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Our first agenda item under the public hearing tab is to consider approving, consider opening a public hearing in consideration of a Chattahoochee Corridor Certificate for 610 Club Drive. As a bit of background, in 1973, the Georgia General Assembly approved the Chattahoochee River Protection Act. This requires that land disturbing activities within a certain distance of the Chattahoochee River be reviewed for compliance with this particular act. At the conclusion of the review, a public hearing is to be held, and then the certificate to be issued by the governing authority. So with that, sir, I'd ask you to please open the public hearing for 610 Club Drive and consider approval of said certificate.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open a public hearing for this item, this agenda item, this agenda item only, for 610 Club Drive. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for 610 Club Drive.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Dana, thank you. Item number 2, please.
Yes, sir. Item number 2 is another Chattahoochee Corridor Certificate, this time for 655 River Knoll Drive. As I had previously said, this is in compliance with the Chattahoochee River, Chattahoochee Metropolitan River Protection Act of 1973. Would ask you to please open another public hearing, sir, for this particular certificate, and then consider adoption of said certificate.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate for 655 River Knoll Drive. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Ott?
I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for 655 River Knoll Drive.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Director. Tab 5, Cobb County Five Minutes. This is the public hearing agenda item. Mr. Volkman?
Morning, sir. At this time, I would ask the Board to conduct a public hearing on the proposed FY17 budget. But prior to opening the public hearing, I would just like to present a brief recap of the presentation that we conducted on the 22nd of August. And just to lay out how we're going to move forward, we're going to have the public hearing today, obviously, at this Board of Commissioners meeting. Our second public hearing will be on September 27, 7:00 p.m. meeting, and at that same meeting, we're going to ask the Board to adopt the proposed budget for FY17. The next couple of slides is, like I said, just a brief recap of the presentation that was already given at the previous Board of Commissioners meeting. None of the numbers have changed. This is the governmental funds, the operating budgets for Cobb County. The total proposed budget for FY17 is $613,995,472, which is a 9.8% increase over the adopted FY16 budget. The business-type funds, proposed budget for FY17 is $857,968,275, which is an 8.7% increase over the FY16 adopted budget. And our annually adopted capital projects funds includes our 800 megahertz capital projects, water RE and I, and water system development fees. That is proposed at $78,926,569, which is a 3.8% increase over the FY16 adopted budget. So at this time, I ask that we conduct the public hearing for the proposed FY17 budget.
Thank you. We'll open up a public hearing at this point to receive comments on the proposed FY2017 budget. For those who wish to comment, please come forward at this time. We will hear as many speakers that are here today. Each speaker will have three minutes. First speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairman Lee, Commissioners, County Manager David Hankerson. Thank you so very much. Jerry Barr with the Center for Family Resources. I'm here to talk about my agency, but I'm also here to talk about the Cobb Community Collaborative. I am not speaking for them, because I don't have an official position. I founded the organization more than 20 years ago, so I think I can talk for them, but not officially, but in support of them. So I want to talk to you about our relationship with the county and the funding for nonprofits. We really appreciate the county supporting the nonprofit community in a variety of ways throughout the years. It really makes a difference in helping us provide our services, our critical services to serve the folks in Cobb County. I would like to point out that over those 20 years, the amount of money for nonprofits has not increased and has decreased. Some of the decreases started in 2008, when we all took a cut, but that have not increased. And the expectation from the Commissioners has been that we would do more with less or the same amount of money. And it's very difficult to do that. It's difficult for you to do that. It's difficult for a nonprofit to do that. Let me talk a little bit about the Center for Family Resources. We went through the process this time, and we were going to get a cut of $10,000, even though we scored 100%, and we always score 100%. In the last eight years, we've gotten a cut of $60,000. That certainly makes an impact. And part of the reason for that is the desire to... And part of the reason for that is the desire to fund more organizations. And the only way to do that is to take from others because there isn't additional dollars. So I encourage you, as you think about going forward, your philosophy on how to fund nonprofits and then the amount of money that you have to do that. Let me tell you a story about the Center for Family Resources. I started in 1984, and we helped folks with rent assistance, and we helped them with $100. So if I had $100,000, that meant I helped 1,000 folks with their rent assistance. But they had to go from agency to agency, church to church, and spend their entire month thinking about how they were going to pay their rent and not deal with the issues in their family. Today, we help with a full month's rent up to $1,000. So now I can only help 100 families. But they are then secure for that month in their, in their housing, and we can deal with the issues that they have so they can become self-sufficient. And six months later, when we check on them, 80% are still secure. The same holds for nonprofits. If you help a nonprofit with enough, they can do their work. If you cannot do that, then they're going to spend their time looking for additional dollars. So I ask you to think about the money that we've lost, the $10,000 that the Center for Family Resources has lost this particular year, and if there's a way to reinstate that. But also to think about the nonprofits in general and encourage more giving to the nonprofit community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate you being here. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. I'm here to ask you to please try to find a way in this budget to fund the parks, the $40 million parks. I realize that the most, in the way of bonds that could be issued is, I believe, 27.4 million or 24.7 million. But please try to find a way to accomplish this before the end of the year. And I'd also like you to consider finding a way to increase the budget for the library system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Glad you're with us. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel Slomavitz, and I live in East Cobb. As a mother of two young children, it's sad to me when we go down, you know, Roswell Road and we see large chunks of land that have been cleared. So I just want to say, you know, I put a, my neighbor up for a nomination for the park. So what's happening with that? You know, I went through that whole process, and we contacted the person, and then I look at the budget, and there's no money there for this land that I nominated. So I just want to say that as a mom with kids, and we'll be here for the next 30, 40, 50 years, I would love to be able to have green space, which is rapidly kind of leaving us large 20, 30, 40 acres of land. So I just want to say I support green space and park green space especially. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rachel. Next speaker, please. If I could, if I could ask, if you're going to speak, would you please come forward and line up here adjacent to the commission assistants so we can move this along? Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
My name is Kay Clapper. I'm afraid that this commission has lost the public trust. First, because of lip service paid to the funding for 2008 green space referendum strictly for political reasons. And second, because even commissioners who really want to fund the referendum have been coerced not to do so. Not following your own promises to fund the project is really a death knell for the democratic process. The percentage of green space in Cobb, now according to your own calculations, is 5,100 acres or 2.6% of the total 220,000 acres in Cobb County. Yet in your own 2030 plan, you propose that 10% of land should be green space and saved for parks. How are you going to buy land if you don't fund the money? After it is all turned into subdivisions, parking lots, business complexes, it will be too late to think about the long-term consequences to the county, such as water runoff, soil erosion, pollution, air quality, traffic congestion, lack of conservation of native plant and animal life, and long-term effects on the quality of life with no green space for humans to enjoy. There may be short-term gains on what you are doing, but the long-term effects will include tax increases to solve the problems created when green space is left out of suburban planning. It is totally unacceptable that this board refuses to include funding for parks in the 2017 budget. It is inconceivable that the debt service fund can be increased over 14,000% and still not include any funding for parks. Commissioners, I would like to know what Cobb County constituents do you serve? Whose interests do you represent? Why not make green space, as well as the Braves Stadium, a legacy for your commission? We could call it the Tim Lee Green Space Initiative. We could even name a park after all of you. Your legacy would live on forever, allowing all the country to enjoy trees, fresh air, and wildlife. Representative government is supposed to be an electoral system where citizens vote to elect people to represent their interests and their concerns. It seems somewhere along the line, not just with this commission, but all over the U.S., this basic tenet of government has been forgotten. Voters feel left out and are frustrated with elected officials who follow their own interests. The voters have spoken once, and I guarantee they will speak again. You must do the right thing and include the 40 million funding for parks immediately in the 2017 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Norm Fag. I live in northeast Cobb County, and I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak here. And basically, I'd like to reinforce what Kay said, that we have a park bond that was voted on by referendum that was never issued. And we've seen no action on it, and now we see nothing whatsoever in the budget for parks. And I think it really needs to be there. There needs to be something for parks in the budget. There are ways to do this. And it's something that's really not going to go away because the land use plan calls for 10% of the acreage in Cobb County to, at some point, be preserved as parkland, and we're a long way from it. We have, I believe someone calculated, 8,000 acres to go. So this is, this is going to be an issue. And even if you can't afford the 40 million at this point in time, there are ways to at least get to some of it. There is money in the budget. You have money on the books. And so I think this really, I would really urge you to put something for parks in the budget and get something done now. We have a lot of people, a lot of landowners, who have been waiting eight, 10 years for their land to be purchased as a park. It hasn't happened. And if you continue to wait, then that land might not be available in the future. And the price is going up all the time, constantly. It's not getting any cheaper. So please do what the voters asked you to do by a 2/3 margin in 2008. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairman Lee and Commissioners. My name is Roberta Cook. I live in Mabelton, and I'm complimenting the other previous speakers about the park bond. I'm active in a group called the Cobb Parks Coalition. Our website is the same as our name, CobbParksCoalition.org. We're citizens from every Cobb County district who have united to support the $40 million Cobb County Park Bond funding. It's a referendum to buy new land, new parkland in Cobb County that was approved by the voters via the ballot box in November of 2008. After 29 properties were recommended for acquisition under this program by the commissioner-appointed Park Bond Citizen Advisory Committee, the program was suspended due to the downturn of the economy. As a result, no land was purchased for parks. Since the economy rebounded, we can thank Chairman Lee and this commission, this Board of Commissioners, for reinstatement of the Park Bond program that was reinstated January 2016 of this year. And this year, the commissioner-appointed Cobb County Recreation Board assumed the responsibility of vetting new property nominations for prospective parks. Next month, they will produce a list of properties recommended for acquisition. To purchase the recommended properties, the program requires funding. $40 million is mandated by the Cobb County voters. Since you're finalizing the budget now for 2017, we think this is the appropriate time to enlighten us on your intentions for the $40 million needed to purchase new land for parks. Would you please take the time today during the meeting to update the public on this funding and your intentions? In closing, for those in the audience who would like more information about this $40 million park bond that we all voted on in 2008 and that passed but was never executed until this year, thank you. Visit our Cobb County website, Cobb County Parks Coalition website. It's www.cobbparkscoalition.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers concerning the budget item? Bill, any other further comments?
No, sir.
Any questions from the boards? Thank you, sir. This is our first public hearing. We'll have a second public hearing on the...
27th of September, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Takes us to tab six, a public comment period. Ms. Dance?
The first speaker signed up is Kay Clapper. The next speaker signed up was Roberta Cook. Do you intend to speak again?
No, that was a speech.
That's all.
Thank you. Now, take us to tab seven. Commissioners, at the request of Commissioner Cupid and Commissioner Ott yesterday in agenda prep, item 37 has been pulled for consideration of full hearing at a later date. With that, I will bring forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
There's multiple seconds. Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. That takes us to tab eight, Transportation Agency. Mr. Wilgus?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. County Manager. Before I begin, I would like to introduce Erica Parrish, who is my new deputy director. She comes to us from Paulding County DOT.
Hi. Nice to be here. Nice to meet all of y'all. Hopefully, I'll meet everyone of you very soon. But I'm just really excited to be here, and I look forward to working with y'all.
Director, I'll take over now first.
Okay. Oh, we've got a loaded agenda this morning. Our first item is to approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for drainage system repairs on Rockwood Drive, project number X 2209, CCDOT contract number 001019. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. The single bid of $251,457.60 from D&amp;H Construction Company was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $223,255 in roadway cost and $28,202.60 in water system cost. The completion date for this project is November 4th, 2016. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $251,457.60 for drainage system repairs on Rockwood Drive, project number X 2209, CCDOT contract number 001019. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion passes four zero. Next item.
This item is to approve another contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for intersection improvements on East-West Connector at Cooper Lake Road, project number X 2322, CCDOT contract number 001034. East-West Connector at Cooper Lake Road is an approved intersection improvements project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. The low bid of $111,152 from D&amp;H Construction was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is 45 consecutive calendar days from issuance of notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $111,152 for intersection improvements on East-West Connector at Cooper Lake Road, project number, project number X 2322, CCDOT contract number 001034. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion passes four zero. Next item.
This is to approve supplemental agreement number one with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc. for engineering design services of Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle, project number E 4190, CCDOT contract number 000911. Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle is an approved project in the thoroughfare improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc. is requested to provide street lighting and pedestrian lighting designed for the project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $22,360 for engineering design services of Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle, project number E 4190, CCDOT contract number 000911. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion passes four zero.
The next item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for drainage system improvements at Liberty Hill Road, project number E 2560, CCDOT contract number 000841. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. Construction of the project is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $26,574.49 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $26,754.49 for drainage system improvements on Liberty Hill Road, project number EE 2560, CCDOT contract number 000841. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Director. Next item.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. for drainage system repairs on Martin Court, project number E 2580, CCDOT contract number 000903. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $43,219.1 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $43,219.1 for drainage system improvements on Martin Court, project number E 2580, CCDOT contract number 000903, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item six, please.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for thoroughfare improvements at the intersection of State Route 3, US 41 Cobb Parkway at Watts Drive, Pine Mountain Court, Pine Mountain Court, project number E 4180, CCDOT contract number 000836. Construction of the project is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Construction, Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $46,572.21 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. a savings to the project in the amount of $46,572.21 for thoroughfare... thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents for thoroughfare improvements at the intersection of State Route Three, US Forty-One Cobb Parkway, at Watts Drive, Pine Mountain Court, project number E forty-one eighty, CCDOT contract number zero 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 eight three six. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford? Thank you, sir. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item seven, please.
This item is to approve a consultant services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates for engineering design services of Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch, project number X twenty-one oh two, CCDOT contract number zero 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 nine six five, and Little Willio Road over Timber Ridge Branch, project number X twenty-two, twenty-one twelve, CCDOT contract number zero 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 nine six six. Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch and Little Willio Road over Timber Ridge Branch, previously identified as Willio Creek, are proved bridge replacement projects in the two thousand and sixteen SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve consultant services, uh, services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., in a combined amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for engineering design services of Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch, project number X twenty-one oh two, CCDOT contract number zero 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 nine six five, and Little Willio Road over Timber Ridge Branch, project number X twenty-one twelve, CCDOT contract number zero 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 nine six six. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second. Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item eight, please.
This item is to approve a transportation enhancement agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation for Floyd Road Trail Phase Two, State PI number zero zero one oh seven two seven, Cobb County Project Number D eleven J zero. Floyd Road Trail to, Floyd Road Trail Phase Two is approved project in the multi-use trails component of the two thousand and five SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The document is, the department is receipt of a TE agreement from GDOT for Floyd Road Trail Phase Two. Under the terms of the agreement, GDOT will fund eighty percent of the eligible construction cost up to a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars. Cobb County will be responsible for twenty percent of the GDOT eligible cost and a hundred percent of construction costs exceeding the state maximum. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a transportation enhancement agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Floyd Road Trail Phase Two, State PI number zero zero one oh seven two seven, Cobb County Project Number D eleven J zero, and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item nine, please.
This item is to approve a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Grant Agreement with the State Road and Tollway Authority for I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway, project number X twenty-four oh nine. I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway, uh, Six Flags Park area improvements at Riverside Parkway is an approved project in the construction, congestion relief and mobility improvements component of the two thousand and sixteen SPOS Transportation Improvement Program contingent upon sufficient federal, state, and other grant funding becoming available. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Grant Agreement with the State Road and Tollway Authority for I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway, also known as Six Flags Parkway area improvements at Riverside Parkway, project number X twenty-four oh nine. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just some clarification about this project for those who may be viewing from the public. This project realigns South Service Road so that there is an actual traffic light intersection at that road and Six Flags Parkway. Right now, there's tremendous difficulty for people trying to cross the road, whether they're going to Word of Faith or to the neighboring apartment complex or the CCT bus stop on South Service Drive. So, this project not only helps the throughput of traffic, but it also helps in keeping people safe and going to various amenities in that area. With that, a motion to approve.
The second. And I'd also like to thank the folks over at Serta for the GTIP grant. We appreciate that contribution. Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
This item is to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for Terrill Mill Road at Greenwood Trail, project number X twenty-eight oh three. Terrill Mill Road at Greenwood Trail is an approved project in the school zone improvements component of the two thousand and sixteen SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The department is in receipt of a memorandum of agreement from the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for design and engineering services required to implement, construct, and install the transportation improvements for this project. The construction costs for this project are not, estimated not to exceed one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. This contribution will be due to Cobb County Marietta Water Authority upon execution of the MOA. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for Terrill Mill Road at Greenwood Trail, project number X twenty-eight oh three. Authorize payment for construction cost in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form substantially similar to that attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries four-zero. Next item, please.
This item is to approve a memorandum of agreement with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for resurfacing on Terrill Mill Road and Lower Roswell Road, project number X twenty-nine oh three. Resurfacing, resurfacing is an approved component in the two thousand and sixteen SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The department is in receipt of a memorandum of agreement from the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for resurfacing on Terrill Mill Road from Cobb Parkway to Lower Roswell Road and on Lower Roswell Road from Terrill Mill Road to Indian Hills Parkway. The department estimates the construction cost of this project will be two million, five hundred and nine thousand, seventy dollars and forty-six cents, of which fifty percent, or one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents, will be paid by the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority upon execution of the MOA. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for resurfacing on Terrill Mill Road and Lower Roswell Road, project number X twenty-nine oh three. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form substantially similar to that attached and is approved by the County Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of a comment to the public who may be watching. I don't want them to think that the project is finished yet. This is just kind of getting ahead. We're probably almost halfway done with their pipeline project. But this will be when the project is finished, the road will be repaved from the entire length of the project. So, motion to approve.
Call the question. Motion carries four-zero. Next item, please.
Sorry?
Take your time, sir.
Item number twelve is to approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment, State PI number zero zero one five two oh five, Cobb County Project Number X twenty-five oh nine. Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the two thousand and sixteen SPOS Transportation Improvement Program and is designated as State PI number zero zero one five two oh five. The department is in, is in receipt of a construction agreement from GDOT for the Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment Project. Under the terms of the agreement, the state will fund eligible construction cost up to a maximum of three million, two hundred and ninety-three dollars, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The county will be responsible for funding any cost exceeding the state maximum. Based on the bids received, there should be no cost to the county. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment, State PI number zero zero one five two oh five, Cobb County Project Number X twenty-five oh nine, and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item thirteen, please.
This item is to approve a contract with Brooksberry Haney and Associates, Inc., for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment, State PI number zero zero one five two oh five, Cobb County Project Number X twenty-five oh, twenty-five oh nine, CCDOT contract number zero zero one oh two seven. Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, timing, and planning component of the two thousand and sixteen SPOS Transportation Improvement Program and is designated as State PI number zero zero one five two oh five. The project will be implemented in three phases. The low bid of three million, two hundred and ninety-three dollars, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents from Brooksberry and Haney Associates was, was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsible, responsive. Installation and activation of the signs and cameras is to be completed by the close of business on March thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Brooksberry Haney and Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed three million, two hundred and ninety-three dollars, eight hundred and fifty-nine, uh, two, three million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs Deployment, State PI number zero zero one five two oh five, Cobb County Project Number X twenty-five oh nine, CCDOT contract number zero zero one oh two seven. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item fourteen, please.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc., for traffic signal rebuilds Phase One, project number E fifty forty, CCDOT contract number zero 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 eight two one. Traffic Signals is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the two thousand and eleven SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Upgrades are complete in change order number one final to the contract with World Fiber Technologies, a saving to the project in the amount of seventy thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-two cents. It's requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of seventy thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-two cents for traffic signals rebuilds Phase One, project number E fifty forty, CCDOT contract number zero 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 eight two one, and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford? Motion to approve. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Last item, please.
Last item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc., for traffic signals flashing yellow arrow, Phase One, project number E fifty forty, CCDOT contract number zero 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 eight two two. Traffic Signals is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, timing, and planning component of the two thousand and eleven SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Upgrades are complete in change order number one final to the contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with World Fiber Technologies, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents for traffic signals flashing yellow arrow, Phase One, project number E fifty forty, CCDOT contract number zero 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 eight two two, and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Jim. Good work.
Thank you, sir.
Good work. Tab nine is Public Services Agency. Mr. Cannon? Six items.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This morning, we got six items. The first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Services Incorporated in amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the installation of new sports lighting fixtures and related equipment to serve athletic field lighting at Harrison Park. This comes under the two thousand and sixteen Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Thank you, Eddie. Harrison Park's looking great.
Put your mic on, please.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. I know. Item two, please.
The Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number two to the contract with Hogan Construction Group, LLC Incorporated, decreasing the, the contract by forty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty, sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents for revised total contract amount of five million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty dollars and seventy cents for construction cost and construction management risk services for improvements at the Cobb County Civic Center. This comes under the two thousand and eleven Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford? Thank you. And the place looks great. Great job, Mr. Cannon. Motion approves. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item three, please.
For the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed one million, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents for asphalt paving and related services to resurface the parking lot and access roadways at Fuller's Park, Fair Oaks Park, and Ryan Park. This comes under the two thousand and eleven Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Ott? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item four, please.
Next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one to the contract with McKellen Group, LLC, reducing the contract by six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents for revised contract amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents for construction services related to the construction of new tennis center buildings at Fair Oaks and Sweetwater Park. This comes under the two thousand and eleven Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Item five, please.
Next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Astor Construction Services, LLC, in amount not to exceed three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents for construction of a new maintenance storage building at Jim R. Miller Park. This comes under the two thousand and eleven and two thousand and sixteen Parks SPOS Program. We ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's a great park.
Yes.
Thank you.
We work together.
Motion passes five-o. Item six, please.
Final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Lowson Associates, Incorporated in amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to provide professional services for preparation of the Cobb County Parks Comprehensive Master Plan. This comes under the two thousand and sixteen Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second? Call the question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, sir. It takes us to tab ten. There's two items under Support Services. First one is Sharon Stanley.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Information Services Department requests the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to make a purchase of a computer equipment, computer equipment for data storage in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars under provisions of Georgia Department of Administrative Services contract with Process Information Systems and authorize the corresponding budget transactions. This price represents a discount of five hundred thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars, or seventy-seven percent off of the manufacturer's list price if the order is if the order is placed before the end of this fiscal year. Technology improvements is an eligible project or program under the 2016 SPOS. Data center building technology modernization is an approved project in support services technology improvements work program. Replacement and modernization of network equipment will ensure for continued growth of business applications and associated data and provide redundancy and survivability of county systems in the event of a natural or man-made disaster.
Commissioner Ock. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sharon. Next item, John.
Chairman, County Managers, County Manager and Commissioners, this item pertains to the 2016 SPOS South Cobb Tag Office, and their renovation budget is originally $100,000 for that project, but in the months since the original request was submitted, the need for increased security has become apparent. An additional $54,864 is requested to include security cameras and recording equipment as well as glass windows at each service center counter and a queue management system. The department recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize supplemental funding in an amount not to exceed $54,864 for the 2016 SPOS interior renovation of the tag office at the South Cobb Government Service Center in Austell, and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cubby.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Appreciate the staff and being able to find additional funds as this project will significantly help with the queuing that's there for the service, but they'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Takes us to tab eleven, which earlier we disposed of by the withdrawal of the applicant. Tab twelve is public comment. There is none. Tab thirteen is appointment. The first item is to approve the appointment of Jeff DeS and Brittany Keith to the Region One Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities Planning Board. I bring that forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you. The second item is an announcement. Commissioner Ock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to announce that I will be appointing James Brock to post fifteen on the one percent SPOS Oversight Committee. He replaces Kess Stadler, and I want to thank Kess for his work.
Perfect. Thank you. Takes us to tab fourteen. Commissioners, public address. Commissioner Weatherford, welcome home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to be back. I took a two-week sabbatical on my motorcycle and completed a little over 4,700 miles covering a lot of different places, and I wanted to say I saw a lot of the world that I had never seen before, including the Badlands and Yellowstone National Park, Mount Rushmore, as well as Custer National Park, Bear Tooth Pass, Grand Tetons, Devil's Tower, and a lot of corn and cows. And it was a great trip, and the best part of it... Did you fall in love? Not with the cows, no. Corn. But it was great. The best part about it, cell phone didn't work most of the time, so I'm very glad to be back and appreciate my assistant, Ms. Woody, taking care of things while I was gone. I have one announcement about an event in Acworth this weekend. It's the seventh annual, I believe it is, Covering the Bases, which is where the Acworth Police Department and the community come together to raise funds for the operation of the Horizon Field, which is a special needs field that services many of our special needs children in the community in Cobb County. It starts Friday night at seven, and they actually have an event, or games, or run, or walk the bases for 24 hours straight, and it finishes at seven o'clock on Saturday. So it's a great event, a lot of things going on. If you get an opportunity to stop by Kenworth Park and Horizon Fields, they're on Main Street in Acworth in Cobb County, and help support a worthwhile cause. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Ock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to commend Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. They told the citizens in East Cobb that they would have a section of Terminal Road open on September second, and sure enough, on September second, the road was open, so I know the folks in the community appreciate that. This Saturday in East Cobb is the annual East Cobbber Parade, starts at 10:00. So for those of you not participating, receiving the candy that is given out, just know that the road will be closed Johnson Ferry from... by Mount Bethel School down to Lower Roswell, but it's a good time to come on out, and then they have a festival afterwards. And then I want to thank the Chattahoochee Plantation Community Association for their annual commemoration of 9/11. They put out a really nice wreath at the flagpole at the entrance to Cobb and Johnson Ferry Road. Also, I had the... On Sunday, I had the honor and the privilege to participate in the 9/11 climb for the fallen with over 100 members of the Cobb County Fire Department, and we were with a total of 500 other people that climbed either the west or the east tower of the office building in Wildwood Park. It's a fundraiser for the Terry Farrell Firefighters Fund, and each one of us had a lanyard with a firefighter who lost their life on September 11th. The particular one that I had was Lieutenant Harvey Harrell from Rescue Five. He was 49 years old. He was one of 11 members of Rescue Five who did not come home that day. And his brother also passed away. There were over 343 firefighters that lost their life on September 11th, and if you think about that, that is almost half of the Cobb County Fire Department. So it was an honor and a privilege to climb the 15 stories seven times, which was to basically kind of match what the firefighters did that day.
Do you have proof of that?
I do, actually. Every time we got to the top floor, they marked our lanyard.
Okay.
So you see, west tower was seven times, and I will tell you that probably half of the firefighters there wore their gear. I mean, I was in shorts and a t-shirt, and I was exhausted when I was done, so a lot of credit to all of them, and the Terry Farrell Firefighters Fund raises money to help firefighters in need, so that's... My Fitbit said it was 99 stories. They told us it was 107. Either way, it was a lot.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Tonight, right here in this room, from 5:00 to 7:00, we are hosting a zoning one-on-one seminar, and it is free, but you need to register, but at this point, if you are available, we ask that you come and learn about the zoning process. I will be there, and Community Development, Dana Johnson and John Peterson, our zoning director, will be there to answer questions as well. There, the libraries, the Area Alliance Clubs are offering free vision screenings at some of the libraries throughout Cobb, and on Monday, September 19th, from 11:00 to 3:00, they will be at Gritters Library at 880 Shaw Park Road. The screenings are for adults and children from six months old and up. Walk-ins are encouraged. Lions Club volunteers will use a screening device to detect possible vision issues that require follow-up professional care. And then the next How to Do Business with Cobb seminar is Thursday, October 20th. Again, here in this room, it is free, but you do need to register. There are some flyers in the back if you'd like to attend. And Keep Cobb Beautiful Medication Disposal Day is Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Superstation on Cobb Parkway. You can visit keepcobbbeautiful.org for more information. And the Cobb County Safety Village staff will host its annual Touch a Truck event from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 on September 24th, Saturday, September 24th, at Town Center Mall. So come and explore police cars, SWAT trucks, fire rescue trucks, fire engines, and much, much more. The cost is $5 per person with a maximum of $20 per family, and you can contact 770-852-3270 for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cubby.
Thank you. Good morning. A few announcements for the district. This Wednesday, we'll be continuing our community zoning meeting, which will be at the South Cobb Recreation Center in Austell from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and hope that you come out and learn about this month's zoning cases. On this Saturday, we have the annual wellness event, which will be held at the Colla Parking Community Center off of Joe Jerkins Boulevard. It'll be kicking off with a race that morning at 8:00 a.m., and then there'll be events and activities for the community for all age ranges between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. As Commissioner O'Neal shared, that there are free vision screenings at our county libraries, and we have one that is in the district this Friday, September 16th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and encourage those who are interested to attend. And we also have a very unique Georgia Blues and Roots Festival, which is coming to the Mabel House Amphitheater on August 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with various artists, and encourage people to visit Ticketmaster, or you can... I think you can get tickets there. I'm not sure if you can get on Mabel House Barnes Amphitheater site, but you can visit there for purchasing tickets for that event. Finally, want to encourage everyone that we are in full-blown election season, and if you are not yet registered to vote, you can still do so by registering by October 11th, and you can update your information online, and you can also visit our Cobb County Elections Office online at cobelections.org, or call them at 770-528-2581. Finally, just wanted to provide a very brief update to the residents who have observed that there is a new bus service in the district, which is Route 25, and Route 25 has been in the planning stages for about a couple of years since 2014, when we initially considered the Flex Bus. However, that new route was not put online until the past couple of weeks. Some reviews have been positive, some not so much, and we want to encourage those who continue to have questions about that to please contact my office or DOT. We want people to know that there has been some questions with respect to where bus stops have been placed, and we are, and I say we, DOT staff is certainly willing to consider the placement of those stops so that they're in places that are more conducive to traffic flow and provide more safety to the residents who are along those bus stops. So encourage you, if you would like those to be moved, to please contact my office, and we can get you in touch with DOT so that we can make this the best route possible because it provides significant connectivity from South Cobb to the Cumberland area, where now people who are utilizing that service have to travel to the Marietta Transfer Station back down south to go towards Cumberland, which can be upwards to an hour for that trip. So with all the developments going on in the Cumberland area, we certainly hope that this is going to be a new bus route that we can certainly support, and that is helpful to the community.
Thank you. I have a few comments to make. First of all, I want to remind folks, or not remind, but just to inform folks that Georgia EPD has declared a Level One drought for our community, and as such, there are some recommended restrictions of watering and the overall encouragement of conservation. Please go to the Cobb Water Department for more information about that. I think it's no surprise to anybody, we've had almost a record number of 90-degree-plus days in the last... this summer. We're in relatively good shape, but it's important for us to be mindful of that effort. Also, I'd like to indicate that the first week of October will mark the 17th Annual Public Safety Appreciation Week, in which the Cobb Chamber honors five men and women who serve among Cobb during their appreciation breakfast. That today, yesterday, they announced the nominees, and there's a few on behalf of Cobb County I'd like to congratulate for being mentioned as nominees, and that's Matt Neely and Alexander Garza, Colin Robles, Bethany Jones, Caleb Reed, Brian Spur... Skerr with the Cobb County Police Department, Cobb Fire Engine 22 Truck 22 Engine Company 7B and Rescue One, Cobb County District Attorney's Cold Case Unit, and then Cobb County Sheriff's Office Criminal Investigation Unit and Fugitive Unit. We're all very proud of these men and women and congratulate them on their nomination. We should all take time to recognize our public safety every single day, but this particular week is marked one where we call them out specifically. Also, if you get an opportunity, we all know, again, that 9/11 was last Saturday, the 15th year celebration, or if you would, a remembrance, rather, of the tragic events that occurred in 9/1101, and you'll recall that the Marietta Quanas, of which Jerry Bar... Are you still currently the president?
Couple more weeks.
Pardon me?
Couple more weeks.
Couple more weeks, so it shows you how often I go, right? But the Marietta Quanas, back on a first-year anniversary, I believe it was, initially put out a flag representing every soul that was lost that day out at the main field at the Kennesaw Battle Park, and they, as a 15th-year anniversary had come about, they have coordinated that again. It is an extraordinary sight to see during the day all the flags flying in unison there, lined up very perfectly, but it's also very somber event if you go at night, the way the lights light the field up and the flags up. So I encourage you to go during the day, celebrate that memorial, and at night to remember those souls lost that day and their families, of course. The flag, we have a flag on our wall here that was presented by the Marietta Quanas to Cobb County citizens as one of the flags that initially flown 15 years ago. David, again, want to congratulate you and your recognition from the weather folks. And it's fall, although the air doesn't feel like it. It is fall, and Eddie Keon and his group have gotten Jim Miller Park in such pristine condition that the annual, annual, no better event in all of America than the North Georgia State Fair, which will start September 22nd through October 2nd. Please go to the website for more information. For parents, I want to remind you, staycation is never better. Cobb School will be out for fall break that week that the fair is open. I encourage you to take your kids, take them often, and bring lots of money. Mr. County Manager, anything else?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.